And will our city clerk please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America.
This is the mayor, Jeff. The two republics are with us, stand one nation, under God, indivisible, just as it is written, and justice for all.
At this time, I'll go to roll call. Before I do counsel, we're still operating under the March fifteenth, I'm sorry, March fifth, 2020 proclamation of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, and we will be following the same process we followed on March twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, 2020. When I call your name, please let me know if you are present. Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
Present.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have to adjust microphones that you came in pretty strong. Councilmember Martinelli.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bangs. Councilmember Bangs, are you on the line? Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Buxton.
Present.
And I am present as well. At this point, we are going to send a quick text out to Councilmember Bangs. It is our understanding that she intended to be on this call. And our city attorney, Mr. Tim George, are you on this call as well?
Yes, I'm present, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'm going to hold for, I'm going to hold for a few minutes before we move forward to see if we get a quick response. It's very possible that the information didn't get to her. I will admit, this is not usual, but we are not functioning under usual circumstances. It is as I thought. Councilmember Bangs has dialed in, but she's having some communications complications. We are working that out as we speak. Yeah, she was, that's what I thought. She might have been on the other line.
This is Councilmember Bang.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about the confusion. Please let the record show that all council members are present, and we are also joined by our city attorney on the, on the conference bridge. Are there any other staff members that are on this bridge? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move forward. So, as mentioned on the agenda, we are suspending in-person public comment during council meetings until further notice. Public comment is still encouraged, but will be accepted in writing, either by email or mail. Our council meetings can be viewed live on Comcast Channel 21, and they are replayed at other times during the week. We are also streamed live on the city's website and can be reviewed at later times as well. The city's website is www.demoineswa.gov, and I also would like to note that on the city website, in the lower left-hand corner, if you might have to scroll down, that's where we keep our, our link to COVID-19 info. And we get our info daily from, is it daily?
Daily.
Daily from the King County Health Department, and it is posted along with much other information that you can link to at that portion of our site. So, I wanted to make sure that people were aware of that as well. So, at this point, are there any correspondences, or have we received any written comment?
Yes, mayor. We received several emails. We received one from Bill Barther, Aaron Schlosser, Rod Cook, Amber, Mary Schuster, Jennifer Ducharme, and Celeste Pina, and they all wrote in for a ban on late fees, and they're asking council to support ban on late fees during the pandemic. We received two comments from Alina Rogers, one for asking the city to accommodate citizens that will be, will be in the most desperate need during the COVID-19 health and economic crisis, and another one asking this, what's the city doing or planning to do to assist in residents during the pandemic, and what is going on with emergency preparedness team. And we also received an email from David Littlewitz, asking the city to waive the traffic impact fees for his project, which is up on Pack Highway and about 262nd Street. I emailed a copy of this complete correspondence to council earlier this evening, and this will also be compiled and added to the council packet and be part of the permanent record on our website. And that concludes correspondences and public comment, mayor.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to ask our city manager to give us a brief update on the city, on the city's preliminary financial picture and address anything else that you would normally under your administrative report.
Thank you, mayor. So, a couple of informational items for the council. Brief legislative update, the city, we were pleased that the city was included in Puget Sound Regional Council's efforts to look at a passenger ferry service that was authorized by the state legislature, and also the city received a grant, or will receive a grant of $350,000 for the Redondo fishing pier from the legislature. And those all escaped different strategies by the governor in terms of trying to preserve resources for the, for the pandemic. Very positive news for the city, we appreciate that. And we will provide tomorrow a very comprehensive report on the legislative session as a whole and discuss that. Anthony will come at some point in the future when we return to something resembling normalcy. Also, want to inform the council that we are receiving our fourth, Phase Four, grant from the Port of Seattle for economic development, and that grant is equivalent to our population in terms of $1 per capita, which is about $31,580, which we will match, and that brings the total number of grants from the port to over $100,000 to help us look at opportunities and options for our marina redevelopment process. A little bit of happy news is that our senior meals that we're providing at the Activity Center, people can drive up there and we hand them lunches. We've served yesterday, 71 meals were served at the Activity Center. We delivered about 15 lunches to the Adriana, and Kyle, our assistant recreation manager, delivered them in a bunny suit this week to the Adriana. So, we appreciate that. What I want to focus on today is kind of a preliminary financial picture relative to the, the COVID-19 virus, and if you're watching on the city website, you can see the PowerPoint that we're presenting. So, let me just walk through this. I think I have about 10 slides. So, the first thing is that the city received this week an award for excellence from the Government Finance Officers Association for the preparation of our 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as our CAFR, and we were pleased to receive this award last year for the 2017 CAFR, and Beth Ann has continued that level of excellence, and so we received this award from GFOA. So, we're, you know, proud of that and pleased with that, and I think it speaks well to the management of our financial responsibilities. The COVID-19 response, so the city of Des Moines has experienced, has experienced in addressing financial challenges, and the way that that happened was, you know, the previous financial conditions faced by the city after 2014, when we received a finding from the auditor pointed to impending bankruptcy in 2017. And the city council and city administration pulled together and righted the ship, and that involved a number of current council members and a number of current staff, and that was literally the first assignment that I was given, was to address budgetary constraints and, and challenges. We learned a lot of lessons about that, and a number of them are applicable to the current challenge, and I will go through those in a minute. As many of you know, and has been stated before, we were so successful in resolving these financial challenges, the city received a three-step bond upgrade from S and P to AA+ saving the cities, the city hundreds of thousands of dollars in issuing and refinancing bonds, especially for the marina, and Moody's also raised our bond rating. So, we can go on to lessons learned that are applicable now, and the number one lesson was, we not only learned, but we instituted fiscal discipline, and we were very disciplined in how we approached our recovery from potential financial disaster. So, the first thing we did was, we identified structural expenditures, meaning ongoing expenditures that occur year to year. Primarily, that would be salaries of employees that you'll be paying year over year, and then we looked at structural revenues, and we matched the structural revenues, structural expenditures, structural revenues are things like property tax and other sources of income that come to the city that are, that occur on a year-over-year basis. We established appropriate contingency and reserves in compliance with Government Finance Officers Association national standards. It's very, very important to understand that our contingency and reserves are not a surplus. Those are a fundamental element of our budget that can protect us in challenges like this time. So, that is not money to spend indiscreetly. That is money that supports, is underlying support for the foundation of the budget. We identified one-time costs, and we funded these with one-time revenues. We did a periodic review of our actuals and budget to assure accurate estimates, and we continue that process through today. We accurately projected out five-year budget plan, and we modified that as needed. We focused on succession planning, and we searched for ways to implement diversification of our revenue, which we were able to do, and which was a strong element of our recovery. I'd like to talk for a minute now about finance from the perspective of public finance as a very different animal from private sector finance. And so, as we go through the process of establishing our priorities, the, these are essential concepts to understand. The private sector is based on what I would call receipts. They're highly measurable and specific. For example, if you own a restaurant, you know how many meals were served and the value of those meals. At the end of the day, you can determine whether you had a profitable day or a less-than-profitable day. If you sell clothing, if you sell sweaters, how many sweaters were sold in a day? What were the receipts? So, it's very specific to a certain product or service. Public goods, on the other hand, are generalized and defined by value, especially their non-monetary value to the community. And one example of this is if we maintain our roads, and fire is dispatched on a life-saving call, and the roads do not have potholes, and the roads are easily passable and well-marked, and fire can get to that event in four minutes and 45 seconds because the quality of the roads can, are conducive to that transport. What's the value of that reduced response time if they got there in seven minutes and someone died in the interim between the 4:45 and the 7:00? Okay? That's a public good. What's the value on that public good? Those are some of the challenges that the city and the city council have had to wrestle with over the years to determine what are the public goods that we need to provide, and in what manner should we provide them. So, I'd like to, to move to the challenges of accounting for COVID-19 and recognizing that public health is a public good. And so, everything we're doing to try and protect our community is, is generalized, a value to all, and not specific, but it's, what are the steps we can take to protect this community? That's a public good, and that's the responsibility of the public sector. It's too early to establish a trend in terms of impacts from COVID-19. We really have only seen the, the disastrous economic effects probably for the last two weeks of March, which means that the first quarter in, in 2020 will not clearly indicate the impacts. At the end of the second quarter, I think we're going to have a much better, a much better picture. We're not able to predict the length of COVID-19 event. That's one thing that's very distinct for an emergency management situation or incident. There is no finite aspect to it. It's gen, it's general, it's spreading, and it's undetermined. The federal response to this was to do, literally do income replacement, and that is to try and get people the income that they were losing as people's jobs went away. And so, that income replacement is designed to enhance consumer demand. And just to comment, if everybody took the $1,200 or $2,400 they're going to receive and put that in a savings account, that, then the plan would be a complete failure. The idea is that income replacement is for people to go out and buy the things they normally would have bought if they'd had wages. So, that's in, the dynamic is to help the retail sector, which therefore generates sales tax, which helps government survive, but also the activity in the retail sector creates jobs. And at this point, the, the lag on job creation is simply that businesses are closed for public health reasons. There's going to be a significant lag time before COVID-19 impacts manifest. For example, property tax receipts for 2020 are based on 2019 values, and I'll talk a little bit more about sales tax and BNO taxes and extended dates for filing tax returns and what that means for us. But tax receipts will come in later, and impacted businesses will be known when tax returns are filed. So, we can anticipate high amounts of receivables, which are money owed to the government that have not yet been paid, and late payments will also come in. And what that essentially does, and one of the things that we'll need to talk with council as we go forward, is that this will create a disruption to our cash flow, and it's with our cash flow, we pay our bills, we pay our salaries, and make payments that are required. So, that's going to be a challenge and something everyone's facing. Financial goals at this time are to maintain the financial integrity of the city, to remain solvent, sustainable, and strong. This goal is confirmed by annual clean bill of health audits from the Washington State Auditor, who looks carefully at all the financial transactions of the city and determines to the degree they were appropriate, effective, and consistent with regulatory requirements. Another goal is to retain our talented and effective workforce. We have spent a lot of time building an incredible staff, senior staff, staff throughout the organization, very talented, dedicated, and effective, and we don't want to disrupt that workforce to the degree we can avoid it. So, what we want to do is utilize this opportunity to review our essential functions as a government going forward, and any organizational, organizational changes that we need to support the new normal when it becomes clear what that new normal will be. And we don't know that yet, but it provides us an opportunity to do some forward-looking, thinking, and planning, and establishing the appropriate organizational dynamic for the city. So, financial strategies. What strategies do we have with very little information, but knowing that there's a huge impact? So, what we've been doing is estimating a 10% reduction in revenue and reduced expenditures in 2020. Our general fund is approximately $25 million, more or less. So, a 10% reduction would look at what would happen if our spending went down $2.5 million. And then we're taking another look and raising that parameter 20%, and saying, what would happen if we had to reduce expenditures approximately $5 million? Where would that money come from? How can we balance what we need to do? And from the estimates, identify critical city functions that must be maintained, back to the, you know, that was a concept in the previous slide, and then closely monitor expenditures. On the revenue side, we're estimating a reduction in revenue, starting point is an 8% reduction, which if that was annualized, would be more, but as I said, first quarter will be relatively normal, and property tax, which is a huge portion of our revenue, will be based on 2020. So, the thing is that property taxes, I think, have been delayed, they can be paid at a later, I think they can be paid in like July 15th or something. So, that means that people won't pay them, we will not receive that money until mostly later in the year. Sales tax, late payments are allowed by the state. Business and occupational tax, the deadline for first quarter was extended by the city through the authority of our finance director to help businesses at this time, and that's been moved from the end of April to the end of July for the first quarter. And all of this impacts revenue collection and cash flow. So, once again, the challenge is, what will the revenue receipts look like, and how will that impact cash flow going forward? And that's, the cash flow is where we can look at drawing down our fund balance to try and, to try and meet our obligations. Additional strategies, flexibility, reallocate funding for short-term solutions, and this is the item that you have under new business council tonight, to allow one-time sales tax to be located in the general fund through 2020. That's a fairly large amount of money, about half a million dollars or so, but that could help pick up the gap, especially relative to cash flow. The other thing that we discovered as we were going through this, which we're very pleased to find out, was that we spent about half a million dollars less in 2019 than we'd intended, and that money reverted to the general fund. So, a couple of other strategies that we're looking at in terms of staff is to freeze vacancies. We would, you know, there will be attrition where people retire. We can help provide incentives for early retirement. We're reducing the extra hires primarily in the Parks Department since programs that the extra hires would support will no longer be offered or provided. And also, we can transfer employees as we are able from the general fund to other funds as appropriate and consistent with our work assignments. One example would be the swim fund, our stormwater fund. If people are working on that, they could be paid from the stormwater fund, which is an enterprise fund. Same thing with Fund 105, which is the development fund, and to make sure that there's appropriate payments for appropriate staff out of alternatives to the general fund. Capital projects is another area, and capital and operating are two separate categories of money, but what we can do with capital projects so that we're not committing resources is to assess the feasibility of constructing capital projects based on the following. Criticality to infrastructure, how critical is it to make sure that those roadways don't have potholes or don't have impediments that prevent, you know, our first responders from getting where they need to, as well as the public in general? We can't solve all those problems, but we can be very specific in choosing projects that need to be addressed. It also matters what the funding source is, what the time requirement for the funding source, will money expire that we could have taken advantage of? What are the manpower requirements of doing capital projects, and what existing contracts do we have? Finally, an action that we're taking that has to do both with the federal and to some degree state government is to record and document all expenses associated with COVID-19 response. We have a new line on time, on our time sheets for employees for time spent on COVID-19, and we explore all opportunities for federal and state reimbursement, especially through FEMA or whatever source comes from the federal government. It's not clear yet from the money allocated by the federal government, the $2 trillion, how much of that will find its way into local jurisdictions, local government, and hopefully will be available not only for the public sector, but for the private sector, and we're very carefully tracking the availability of funds for small business and for other investments, and the federal government has not yet worked out how that's going to go. They're trying to accomplish individual payments and also payments to business, and they've had so many applications through the banks that I think they're still going to sort out how that's going to happen. But we are watching all of that carefully and making sure that we will be in a position to help advise and support our business community and receiving their fair share of any external support. And mayor, thank you for the opportunity to present that to the council.
Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Thank you. This takes us forward to, well, there aren't, there haven't been any, yes.
Councilmember Bang, I have a couple questions for the city manager. Is that possible now?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. So, great presentation. So, great presentation. I do appreciate how well you provided this in terms that all of us should be able to understand. How often are our finances reviewed for accuracy and appropriate in this cycle?
Well, I think the first answer to that is, you know, when we have the state auditor spending months at a time in our finance department reviewing everything, I mean, that's an annual event. We update as much as we can monthly, and try to give timely reports to council as we move forward. And I have, you know, we're very careful about how we do things. So, you know, if we find a mistake, or there's an error or something, we try to correct that as quickly as we can. But I would just say it's essentially under constant review.
And I think that's a good thing for the public to understand, so thank you. The other one is, can you, and I know at this particular point in time, it's probably up in the air and sometimes never the same every day, but based on this pandemic, what would be considered essential services?
Yeah, that, that would, that's a great question. And so we're, we're in the process, and this is going to take a while. And I think that when council can see what our summary will be, will most likely be in August at the budget retreat, and we can start talking about essential services and the funding needs going forward in 2021. But it's unknown at this time. I mean, at the moment, having an emergency operations center is an absolutely essential service, but potentially that will not be an ongoing essential service. So looking at that, and trying to balance out what we're providing, you know, that's, that's a, those are policy decisions that will bring to council at the appropriate time, and we have that information, and we know more about what the new normal is going to look like.
Great, thank you. And then one comment, oh, is, when I was the logistics chair on the EOC at my last organization, the documentation piece for FEMA is good in terms of the time sheet, but please, and I'm sure you've thought about this, the activity and the time spent, especially describing what that activity is, is going to be extremely, extremely important. Because I did the finances back during the squally in 9/11, and it was extremely frustrating to go back and try and figure out what everybody did. So that's just a, just a comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Did any other councilmembers have a question?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Harris. Michael, have you gotten any feedback yet as to, one, the city's capital projects, and also from companies that have development projects here? I assume they're all on hold now, and how that might affect REIT, and, yeah, just, I'm just trying to get a sense of all the construction, what, you know, how does that play out in terms of city revenue?
Well, I think one thing you'll see this evening, councilmember, is that there are two items on the consent calendar that are essentially paid for by, as we politely call, other people's money, which we like very much. So capital projects are a function of necessity, how essential are they, and then what's the financial picture to support that occurring? In terms of the development community, I've been in touch with all the major developers that we know, all the people that have expressed interest in being a part of the city redevelopment, and you're correct, everybody is on hold at this point.
Do you have a sense that they will, you know, that they will resume these projects after this, whatever this crisis is, is over? Or is there a chance that, you know, some of these projects won't be able to carry forward?
Yeah, it was unfortunate, on the way to the meeting, I broke my crystal ball. So that's a good question. And we know that the nature of the American economy is to grow. And given opportunities, low cost of money right now, high liquidity, and investment opportunities in the future, that I think we can have some level of assurance that development will continue, and will be robust, and will be positive. But the time at which that happens, I think, is the question that nobody knows the answer to.
Thank you.
Is there any other councilmembers that have a question for Michael? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to move forward to councilmember comments and presiding officers' reports. Since we haven't had any board or committees, there's obviously nothing to report there. So I have received a few requests from the council, from various councilmembers, asking for a few moments during board and committee reports or council, council comments, as we're referring to it tonight, to speak. Per Council Rule 20G2B, board and committee reports and councilmember comments shall be limited to four minutes, and tonight we will start with Councilmember Harris.
For the public at large, the Port of Seattle is going forward with the port package update program, and I would just encourage the folks out there who have not approached me or ctacnoise.info with problems, to do so, either take pictures of the damage you have, email us, because we are now at the stage where we're prioritizing which, you know, we're figuring out which homes will be scheduled first. And I think a number of homeowners kind of have let that go by the wayside during this crisis. And, let's see here, the other thing is, I would strongly encourage small businesses to look at Governor Inslee's, the Small Business Grant. It is much easier, and it's just a much better thought-out program than the federal programs, which I know a lot of you have found very frustrating. So please investigate the $10,000 program for small businesses here. It's ridiculously easy to do. That's it.
Thank you, councilmember.
I have a question for Councilmember Harris. This is Councilmember Bangs. When you're talking about the public should take pictures and email us, are you talking about Tina Orwell's email? I'm not sure who you're talking about.
No, there's an organization called ctacnoise.info, which basically we got, we essentially started the whole thing that resulted in HB 2315, the port package update. And the port has to figure out, they have to prioritize which homes to do first. The program, you know, potentially could be over 6,000 homes. And, you know, I would rather, they have assured us that they will work on these according to priority, according to the most damaged homes, the ones that have had the complaints for the longest time. So if homeowners, you know, have, have had problems, they should let, let ctacnoise.info know, so they can, you know, get on the list.
Okay. Because that, that wasn't clear to me, I don't know if it was clear to anybody that might be listening. So maybe that's an address that can be added to our website if the mayor and city manager agree.
Yeah, just, just, it originally, the whole thing originally was that there were about 170 homes that had had really bad structural damage from their port packages being installed improperly, bad materials. And Director Metrick agreed that those homes, which were, you know, in the worst shape, would be handled first.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Harris. I think the, the point is that we will get from Representative Orwell the address that people need to contact, and we will present it on our website.
Thank you.
Next person is Councilmember Martinelli.
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep my comments for tonight. I want to echo my comments from last meeting, and give a big thank you to all of our staff, our police officers, local firefighters, and really anyone else who's continuing to work and help the city through this pandemic. I also want to thank Des Moines residents, the ones in particular who are acutely following the state stay-at-home order, which is absolutely making a difference based on the data we have so far. In recent days, I've continued to advocate on the city and state level for policies, which I believe will help those most indeed during this pandemic, including a freeze on late rental fees, a pause on utility payments, and increased funding for local food banks. Rather than get into the details here, I'll encourage anyone with questions about what I'm working on to send me an email at amartinelli@desmoineswall.gov. Thank you, Mayor, that's everything.
Okay, and we have a question for you from the city manager.
Well, I appreciate the comments by Councilwoman Martinelli in regard to our first responders. I just wanted to let you know that the person who is everywhere all the time, our fire chief, just joined us in the council chamber, so Chief Pennington, welcome.
Okay, our next person is Councilmember Bangs.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend the update and walkthrough at the EOC last Thursday before they shut down on Friday. And as I stated before, being in the EOC at every event, I am very pleased to say that the area with which they were able to set up and utilize was done very efficiently. And the update that was provided by the, by both chiefs, as well as Dan Brewer and Shannon, were excellent. I think what we saw in there was exactly what you needed, was information, televised information, up-to-date information. And I think what's, what's tragic, as we all know, is that the information is almost, it's so fluid, you've got to update it, I would imagine, hourly, but I don't know if we've got that much time to do it. I know it's open from 8 to 1 right now. But I want to thank everyone, especially both chiefs, Chief Thomas and Chief Pennington. Your guys are awesome, and I think city staff, you know, Michael, you've got a great city staff. They're, they're there, and they'll be, they're 24/7 if they need to be. So, so I appreciate everyone's time spent on putting that together.
Does that conclude your remarks?
Yes, you know, it's extremely difficult on the phone, and I realize that this may last a while. But I believe that there are some things, especially comments, that I might have, that I would really prefer to, to voice at the dais. So I am going to reserve, and I've got my comments written down, and they'll be appropriate when we're finally able to get back together. So I know it's difficult just talking on the phone. So yes, that, that is my last comment.
Okay, the next person to speak is Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have much. I would just like to say, nothing like a few 55 and over days to get 216 paved. It looks great. Been down it a couple times, because I still have to check into the job site, and they're practicing social distancing. And it looks great, man. As soon as we get it striped and everybody out of there, it's going to be a good, a good thing. So, thanks for the Des Moines team, and C.C. Centini, and we'll move forward. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Councilmember Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I echo my colleagues, and thanks to our staff, our senior staff, just the brainstorming and the pulling together and reworking this, and that it's a continual fluid activity. It's day by day and week by week, so fabulous work, both the chiefs and, and also my colleagues. And so tonight, my comments, my goal tonight is to engender in our community faith in our civic leaders in public service. So foremostly, these people, our civic leaders, our staff leadership, they're, these people are people who have friends and families, homes. They live in community, and they are losing their freedom too, and most of whom are still working as safely as possible in order to make sure that our city stays healthy and sustainable now, and in the future. These people, I know, they're honest, kind, patient, and smart. So, and now I'm going to add myself, we are people, we are trying. Our families, friends, our personal health and resources are at risk, just like everyone else. So with that in mind, I really appreciate all, our staff, our community servants, my colleagues, these councilmembers, when I see that you're in there, you know, elbow-deep, knee-deep, working out in the community, every bit of volunteer time I'm thankful for, and the staff that continues to work and rework. But also, some call-outs are some agencies that our city continues to support during this time that we don't hear about a lot. Our city supports several agencies, Anew, Child Haven, Children's Therapy Center, The Crisis Line, 211 Information, and the 24-Hour Crisis Line, and Team Link. We support DON, the Domestic Abuse Women's Network, the Des Moines Food Bank, Health Point, Hospitality House, Can't Youth and Family Services, King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, Multi-Service Center, Meals on Wheels, the Hyde Senior Shuttle Program, Pediatric Interim Care, Washington Poison Control, and the West African Community Council. All of these agencies, as far as I know, are still out serving our community. So I applaud our city for continuing our commitment to all these organizations, even while we foresee our revenue being severely affected. Our reduced resource with the same commitment level, translated, this means that we are offering even a higher level of support for all these services during this crisis. So I appreciate our city's commitment to these agencies, but also to our city staff, so that they do not become part of the crisis or add to the burden of these agencies. Our leadership is dedicated to the long-term health and vitality of our city, its economy, and its people. Every conversation I've had of late has included the big picture. Our city leadership believes in and is protecting our future, because this is a crisis, it's not permanent. So one last thing, our success as leaders will be evidenced in our ability to influence through teamwork and empowerment, especially in times of crisis. In the last few weeks, I have experienced undue public criticism and shaming at the hands of and under the watch of some of my colleagues, and I have refused to respond in like-kind. If we, as leaders, damage our ability to influence within the team by internal or external criticism or shaming, we lose our connection, our ability to influence, and we compromise our future potential in leadership. If we publicly damage a colleague's reputation, we steal their ability to influence and encourage wealth. Who then do we steal from? The colleagues? Or do we actually steal from those that they influence, encourage, and empower? This is not a time to publicly unveil weakness, or instill doubt, let alone bitterness. It's not a time for accusation or disparagement, it's not a time for complaining, it's a time to pull together as a community and celebrate even the small contributions of our members. debriefing will come later. Today, let's applaud one another, find each other's strengths and reveal them, encourage one another and advertise good news. So, one last thing in regard to our consent agenda, the two construction items are fabulous additions to our community, and they are dependent on grants, and as was already said, other people's money. So two thumbs up from me. That concludes my remarks. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Mahoney? Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
You're a little distorted. Might want to back off from your microphone just a hair.
Yeah, okay. Is that better?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you for not being shy.
Yeah, it's never been a problem, as you know. In addition to the first responders and so forth, I also want to acknowledge our medical professionals, who are definitely working on our behalf, possibly putting their families at jeopardy, et cetera, and I think that's important. I know a lot of citizens are on both sides of the fence about some of the parking closures, but I do like the saying, "If you need to take a car, then you, then the park is too far." Social distance is important, and unfortunately, some people haven't obligated where I think most have. It's unfortunate some of the personal freedoms are limited, but what needs to be done for all groups of people, considering all positions, is a tough thing to do. So I just ask you to respect it and honor it and understand it. Also, I'd like to talk about the businesses. I really want to appreciate the businesses, those that have closed their doors because they know it's the right thing to do, and then those that have been able to operate, particularly the restaurants in our community. I want to especially acknowledge Bonnie Wilkins and some of the staff. Back a few weeks ago, when this occurred, I worked with them to create a list that I've been very pleased with sharing. We used the business licenses and so forth to verify some of the information, to get some of the details. Now, I've seen it in various formats, but I wanted to acknowledge the one that's particularly on the city website today. It is the best I've seen so far. It has the link to the city, to each of the restaurants and their menus, and it's the quickest way for people to patronize these businesses. Also, I want to talk about activities. There was, I posted something recently that showed the North Hill Elementary teachers out doing a parade in the community up on North Hill. They were reconnecting with their students. It's activities like this that build and grow community and are the best dose of hope and assurance any of us can contribute to our community. I challenge all those listening in the public to find ways to do similar things to bring us together during this tough time. A couple things that are tough for me as a leader is I've seen a couple things that I'm very concerned about. I mostly monitor social media and some of the blogs and things, but rarely comment. In the past couple weeks, I've had to comment on a few items that have crossed the line. I only do that because it needs to be said. There's a couple things that us as council members, we're held to a higher standard. I think it's important to know that communication for us is okay. People want to be informed by us, and answering factually is equally important to any of the questions they might have. But we have to be careful about our comments. Representing any mistruths or portraying opinions in city matters. We do this from the dais. We don't do it elsewhere. And part of the reason I do that is, I did some legal research, and I had it confirmed, is basically some of the communications, according to a couple recent decisions in the city of Pala, we have definitely crossed the line and may have had a couple council members put us in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, as well as the Public Records Act. We, anything you do and considering anything you might state, and I caution everybody to be careful, can be part of public records requests. It could possibly put us into litigation circumstances and so forth. We can't, we can't make statements that are untrue. It is not on our, on our best behalf to make allegations or lewd that the city hasn't provided the most updated information. We have, we have done everything in our power, in my opinion, to provide quality information to the community. We can't make promises. We can't, we can't say that there's, that we could provide no interest loans or anything like that. We can't do any of those types of things. We definitely cannot give the idea that we can do more than what's possible. If you have ideas, I encourage you to work with your city staff to see if those are possible or doable. And we've got to be careful of our verbiage. A small example, just as simple as surplus versus reserve, which I think Michael did a good job of clarifying. We can't give the, we can't give the perception that we overtax our residents. We don't. They might be overtaxed, but it's not from the city. And it gives them, it gives them a misunderstanding. The other thing I would also say is, I challenge all our council members to know the whole story. There's been a lot of comments about the food bank recently, and it, as Councilmember Buxton very adequately explained, there's a lot of different organizations we contribute to, and one over another is not that simple. Simply, it's a difficult situation to give one money more money versus others, because beating our residents and ensuring they do in the many capacities we do is no less important than, say, those victims of domestic abuse are plugging in homeless communities to, to what it would be a more consistent lifestyle, and on and on. So know all the aspects of something before you speak to it. I really encourage that. The other one is, and I'm going to reiterate what Councilmember Buxton had said, I've seen comments and so forth that slander and infer that some council members are not as engaged, or make laze over the packets, aren't good counts, aren't good electives, or whatever it might be. And that's just flat-out wrong. If you've got to say something, say it from the dais, or say it to that person in person. As she said, we need to be building a team during this community, during this time, and we also need to be working together. We might have differences, and that's okay. That's what we do, is we debate, and we make the vote, and that's what it is. That's the way this is supposed to work, and we're a seven-team, a seven-team membership. With that, I just want to encourage our public, and I want to say this much in closing, with the Emergency Operations Center, which I took a tour of, this city is doing everything it knows to do during this difficult time. I can assure you, anything we've implicated, or we put into charge or into place, is for your protection. We are doing the best we can under unprecedented times. And I want you to know that I am in daily conversations with staff, the mayor, and many council members, and I assure you, your best interest is all of, all the focus we have. And I want you to stay safe, stay healthy, and keep your distance from everybody else where applicable. And we love you, Des Moines. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bangs here. May I tag on to that, Mayor?
Sure.
So I would like to also say, and thank you, Councilmember Buxton and Mahoney, there are a number of, I mean, if you want to talk about clarification and truth, there are a number of spots out there that we can do more than what the federal government or the state can do. And I would say that all of our constituents are in a dire straits right now. I can't imagine one that isn't. I mean, we're all in this in various different forms, and we're dealing with it the best we can. But we are unable, as a city, to set up decontamination sites. We are unable, as a city, to do some of the things that some constituents think we can. Now, decontamination sites are set up for, I would imagine, hospitals, patients, people who absolutely have been affected and impacted by COVID-19. I know that I'm following what the federal, as well as our state government, has been saying, which is to make sure you wash your hands. Make sure when you are out, you take wipes with you. Make sure you are taking care of yourself as much as you can. We can't stop hoarding. We know we can't get everything at the store. But as far as what we're doing, if people tell us that there's stuff going on in their neighborhood that they don't like, like graffiti, or garbage, or stuff like that, that we know we can assist with, we need to get that information from them, and there is on our website a phone number for them to call. But we are unable to do more than, at this particular point in time, that our federal government, our military, and our state is doing. I mean, I can't imagine how Des Moines can do more, more than what they're already set up to do. My final comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bangs. Well, this moves on to my report, and the first thing I want to do is I want to thank our first responders, our medical professionals, our grocery and delivery workers, including the truckers that bring things to various distribution sites, our restaurateurs, community members, and all citizens that are observing the social distance and stay-at-home policies. These are helping to keep our community safe, and it is saving lives. We've heard many comments tonight. One thing we know for certain is that in order to beat this virus and protect the health and safety of our residents and maintain a viable, functioning city government, that we will need to be ready to help rebuild our economy in the future, we do need a team effort. We need cooperation, collaboration, and communication. That's the strategy. That's the solution. It's that simple. It's just teamwork. Now, however, since we last met, there have been individual council members acting on their own who have claimed to be representing the council, and with their personal view, misrepresented the voice of the council as a whole. That is not, this is not only concerning to me, but it is offensive. Because this is problematic and, because this is problematic and misleading to the public, I need to address this tonight. Mr. Harris, by your own social media posting, you criticized the role of the Emergency Operations Center before you even saw or understood what it does. What it does is save lives by coordinating the actions of our first responders, fire, police, and medical, and by helping to protect them and our public. When you finally did tour the facility, your approach to professionals in the EOC was that of arrogance. It was communicated to me that you successfully made it clear to them that you do not understand emergency management, its procedures, or the need it serves. It's surprising to me that an elected official would try to erode public trust by questioning the value of an EOC. It's okay to ask the questions, it really is, and to try to garner some level of understanding, but speaking out negatively before getting the answer doesn't seem responsible to me. After that, you chose to participate in a conference call with our legislative delegation from the 30th District. This, again, is a call where you represented yourself as a council representative without the authorization of this council, and you made statements confirmed by several who were on the call to the following effect: "Des Moines downtown businesses are mediocre and third-rate. The coronavirus provides a great opportunity to redevelop the downtown with hundreds of millions of public dollars, as these mediocre businesses will not survive the virus. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to redo the downtown." You stated that your highest priority also was to construct a parking structure downtown. These are outrageous comments, and they definitely do not reflect what I know of this council. The confusing part is that when you copied the, that you copied the city's restaurant posting and put it on your site encouraging people to support our local businesses via takeout, and you claim that you were the source of the information. Please help me understand the authority. I will finish, sir, and then you can speak. Please help me understand. You tried to encroach, how are, you can post and support businesses that you are calling third-rate and mediocre and believe that will not survive? Finally, you tried to encroach on the authority of the city manager by falsely requesting information on behalf of the council. Representing your request is coming from the city council. Many times, we have provided you with the laws of the state of Washington that define your duties as a council member in this form of government. You continue to ignore the law. These are not isolated situations. So I will conclude by saying, your abuse of your role as an elected official is confusing to me and concerning, and I believe to my colleagues. More so, in the midst of this enormous, enormous public health concern, I cannot understand how you would be disrespectful to our small business community and naively believe that government funds would allow us to capitalize on your projected demise. All of this council have been willing to work with you and collaborate collectively towards the benefit of the city. However, your constant dismissal of facts and the value of others' input, including our administration, our law enforcement, our professional staff, are making working with you very difficult. I am hopeful that you will take some time to understand your role and to realize that you're not a one-person show, but you are part of a body of seven, and I welcome your consideration.
Councilmember Martinelli, I just want to say that that was disgustingly inappropriate. Continue, please.
So noted.
May I reply?
You may.
Um, so you used the word outrageous, and I will just say that many of the things you just said are outrageous if they were true. You have distorted my comments in any number of contexts, and I don't have, you know, I'm happy to take the public's time to refute all of those, I guess you'd call them, charges.
No, they are not charges. They are pointing out statements of fact that have come to me, that have been observed from your social media postings, and have been, and were stated in a public forum. Now, you can dispute, you can dispute them, but they are statements of fact, and that's why I felt it important to call it out tonight. It is very appropriate, in my role as mayor, to work with council members and try and bring them to come together and move forward. As was stated by several of my colleagues tonight, they have been called out inappropriately in social media. They have been, there have been a number of things said and done. There have been times I have spoken to you where it has been reported that you have represented yourself as representing the city in various circumstances, and in fact, you were not there as a representative of the city. You were there as an individual person unless you were at this dais or are authorized by the city to move in on a, to be in a situation representing a topic. And at that time, all the council would likely know what your position would be.
Sir, I never represent myself as the voice of the government. Never. I tell people my title, and that is perfectly appropriate. So...
It is appropriate, but when you're speaking in a format, you need to say, "I am Councilmember Harris, but I am here representing myself as a private citizen." That way, it is known that even though you are a council member, that your role, because the fact that you're a council member probably got you invited to some of these opportunities, but if you're there, that's fine. Speaking as a council member is not, when you do not have the authority of this council, to represent whatever point of view that you've put on the table. And from what I could have articulated, you can see we don't agree on several angles, and those points that you made, again, are troublesome.
I'm sorry you feel that way. That's, that's all, that's all I can say. And yeah, sir, you feel that way.
Well, okay, help me understand then. Would you please tell me what businesses we have that are mediocre and third-rate and you don't, and you don't see surviving this virus?
How dare you? I will not reply to that, and that was a conference call. If, you know, that's how you want to, I have no shame in anything that I say, you know, to any, in any of these contexts, but, you know, no. I have no intention of providing a list of like, well, these businesses are worthy and these are not. All of these businesses deserve to succeed, but the fact is that some are stronger than others.
Well, that is not the way you represented it on a public conference call to elected officials and members of the service community, so...
I would be, I would be interested to know who basically told you this, because they either distorted my words, or you're choosing to do so.
I can assure you, I was informed by several members on that call. They were, they informed me out of concern. But since you don't want to address this, I will take us forward. That is, that does conclude my report. Will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, 24th Avenue South and South 208 Street Intersection Improvements Project Public Works Contract. And item three, Barnes Creek Trail Project, 16th Avenue South, Massey Creek, DeKent Des Moines Road, Public Works Contract. And that concludes the consent calendar. Mayor?
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
No move. Councilmember Bangs.
Is there a second?
Seconded. Member Nutting.
Motion was made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by Councilmember Nutting. Does any councilmember wish to remove any items? Seeing none, I will ask each councilmember individually for your vote. When I call your name, please indicate your vote to approve the consent calendar, as with a yea or a nay. Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
Yea.
Councilmember Martinelli.
Yea.
Councilmember Bangs.
Yea. Can people please mute until they have to speak?
Councilmember Nutting. Councilmember Harris.
Yea.
Councilmember Buxton.
Yea.
And I also vote yea. This motion passes 7-0. This takes us forward to new business. Draft ordinance number 20-023, suspending restrictions on the use of one-time revenue to address COVID-19 pandemic. The staff presentation will be from our finance director, Beth Anro.
Mayor, I'm just going to introduce this. As you saw in the earlier presentation about finances, this is a kind of another tool in our arsenal of ways to address the pandemic in terms of cost. And what it would do is allow us to redirect some resources that previously have been designed for capital projects. This is one-time sales tax for projects over $15 million. And what this would do is allow us some flexibility to utilize that money in the general fund as needed. And this would also help address some of the issues we talked about regarding fund balance and cash flow and other things, depending on the need. So with that, I'll ask Beth An to describe that a little more and take any questions anyone may have. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and council, and city manager staff. Beth Anro, Finance Director. So tonight, you have the draft ordinance for your consideration to suspend the restriction on the use of one-time revenues that we have codified in Chapter 3.100 in our Des Moines Municipal Code just for 2020 year. And as Michael said, in order to address potential revenue shortfalls caused by the worldwide COVID-19 pandemic and our response to that pandemic. So as we talked... Or as Michael talked earlier in the presentation, when we created the 2020 budget, we have the budget policy to bring to council and citizens a balanced budget using structural revenues with structural expenditures and one-time revenues with one-time expenditures. And this revenue source is for the projects that Michael mentioned, over $15 million. That money is brought in, and then it's actually transferred over to Capital Projects Fund for capital. So this one... This request is to keep it in the general fund to be used to help cover that potential shortfall in revenues. And part of it is, as we assess the revenue or the impact to COVID... Or what COVID-19 is doing to our business community and to the city's finances, this would help with the cash flow and help us... Sorry, kind of lost my train of thought here. Basically, be able to respond to providing services with this money instead of cutting expenditures. We may have to... We're looking at what that impact is and what expenditure reductions might be, and this would provide some relief from that, so...
Are there any councilmember questions?
Yes, Councilmember Harris. Do you have any details yet as to how this money will be... Basically, how the money will be spent? And if not now, do you have a timetable for when that kind of detail will be available?
Councilmember, let me respond to you. This is Michael.
Before you respond, I'm sorry, I breached protocol. Is there... I need to go through the motions before we entertain the discussion. So our first motion is to suspend Rule 26 in order to enact draft ordinance number 20-2023 on first reading. Is there a motion?
No move. Councilmember Bangs.
Councilmember Bangs.
Motion made by Councilmember Nutting, seconded by Councilmember Bangs. All those in favor, I need to poll you individually. Deputy Mayor Mahoney?
Aye.
Councilmember Martinelli?
No.
Councilmember Bangs?
Yea.
Councilmember Nutting?
Yea.
Councilmember Harris?
Yea.
Councilmember Buxton?
For clarity, Mayor, are we voting to suspend Rule 26A? What are we voting on?
We are voting to suspend Rule 26A and pass the ordinance on first reading.
But we're voting to pass it before we've had discussion?
No.
There was a first reading, there was a motion and a second, and so then are we going to have discussion?
Yes, there will be discussion. I have to get the motions done, and then before we vote on the motion is discussion.
But you just need a first and a second in order... Before discussion starts, correct?
I...
And you got a first and a second from Nutting and Bangs?
I got a first and a second on the motion to suspend Rule Number 26A in order to enact draft ordinance on the first reading. The motion is to suspend Rule 26A at this time.
Yea.
You said yea?
Councilmember Martinelli, can I make a quick comment on the vote?
No.
I...
There's no comment on this particular vote. It's whether or not we're going to pass, and...
We're voting against suspending the first reading, not the ordinance itself.
We are voting, yes, we are voting only to allow the rule that would allow us to pass it. We are not voting on the ordinance at this time. So, and your vote was a no, correct? Councilmember Martinelli?
Yes, not a no on the ordinance, a no on suspending the rules for passing on first reading.
Okay, and we're only talking about Rule 26A. So at this point, with my vote, I will vote yea. It passes 6-1. That's the passing of the suspension... The rule to suspend Rule 26A.
Did you pull Councilmember Bangs?
I did.
Okay. I understand. I didn't think you did.
Councilmember Bangs, you voted, correct?
Correct. I voted yea.
No, they all voted.
Okay, I misunderstood. My apologies.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's a great technology that we're working on. We've got this, okay. So now, we have... We need to have a motion on the table before we can entertain discussion. So is there...
Councilmember Bangs?
Excuse me?
Councilmember Nutting?
Yes, you're recognized.
I move to enact draft ordinance number 20-023, amending DMMC 3.100.020, and suspending the restriction on the use of one-time revenue in the general fund budget for the year 2020.
Do I have a second? I'll second it.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Bangs, I'll give it to you. Okay, so the motion was made by Councilmember Nutting. The second was by Councilmember Bangs. And at this point, I'll take us forward. Councilmember Harris, you asked a question, and the city manager, Mathias, can now answer the question.
Yeah, appreciate the question. So I think the thing to understand about this is that it creates some flexibility as we're planning what the financial picture will look like. We do not know that now, which I tried to point out in the earlier PowerPoint. And so what this does is provide a potential resource and some flexibility as we're planning, because we can count on, for example, if this is half a million dollars or whatever amount of money it is, as we go forward, that's half a million dollars we may not need to find elsewhere. And this is money that is not committed to anything specific other than general capital projects. So by returning it to the general fund, it just provides flexibility in planning. And the answer to your question is, no, we do not know specifically how that money will be spent. And the timeframe for knowing that will be as we're able to determine what the impacts of the virus are. Beth An, anything to add to that?
May I follow up, please?
I'm waiting for one response. Hold one minute. Beth An, please.
I just want to reiterate what Michael showed in the presentation, is that with the delay in Department of Revenue allowing businesses to file their sales taxes later in this year, and also with us allowing the first-quarter business and occupation tax being filed in July, it does ease the impact to the businesses. But for us to figure out the impact to the revenue picture, it's going to add some months to that. There's just a little bit more uncertainty, because normally, we would be getting that information in April, May, and with also the deferral of some property tax. We're looking at more June, July, August before we will really understand the impact to the business community.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. I need to get back to Councilmember Harris, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Nutting.
Copy that.
Is there an upper cap on the amount of money that can be drawn down?
There's not an upper cap on that. It's a function of... This is money derived from projects of $15 million of construction or over that. And typically, this is sales tax on things like construction materials. So the degree to which projects continue, that will determine what the one-time sales tax revenue is.
As a point of clarification, there's not an upper cap, but it's limited to whatever the sales tax amount turns out to be as one-time sales tax from this specific category, correct?
That's essentially correct. I'm not quite sure, Councilmember Harris, I mean, is there an upper cap based on... No, there's not relative to the number of projects that could come in $15 million or over. That's relatively unlikely right now, and there's some amount of money already in the capital that we would move back to the general fund, which is, I think, approximately half a million dollars.
Let me quickly clarify. I mean, is there... Are you self-limiting to a particular dollar amount, regardless of what the tax revenue is?
No, we're not.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting?
My comments are, as painful as this is, with former Mayor Kaplan and my beliefs of getting this moved when we did, it's tough to do this, but in the state of emergency that we're in, to free up these dollars to be used where we need them to be used, and then with the sunset at the end of the year, I have no problem supporting this bill.
Thank you. Any other...
Deputy Mayor Mahoney?
Deputy Mayor Mahoney. And then, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Mahoney, there was someone else, please?
Councilmember Buxton.
Okay, so let me get Deputy Mayor Mahoney, and then I'll go to you, Councilmember Buxton. Councilmember... Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
So obviously... So obviously, this is a tough situation. Any money not used during this time, even though we have them available for whatever need we might and whatever the balance is, will that be moved back to this account?
Well, I think it automatically sunsets at the end of the year, right? So we would... What we have now, prior to council taking action, that would automatically revert back as of January 1, 2021. You know, if it was necessary to continue it, we'd have to come back to council, I believe.
That would be correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Buxton?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't have any problem with this concept, because in my opinion, it's a one-time event. It's a pandemic event, so it's still conceptually one-time money for one-time purpose. And there are some alternative wordings. I suppose I considered a few different things, but this is... My perspective is, this is basically the same team, the people who are going to administrate this, who made the same concept successful in 2014. So I'm just believing with the smart, creative dedication, I think that this could be done again, done again well. You know, the council's not the same, but like I said, the people who are going to administrate this paradigm are pretty much the same. So I'm for this. I'm for this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Bangs?
Yes, recognized.
I would like to say that, given the fact that we've entrusted our city manager and staff with doing the right thing during the course of the year, every year, that considering all the things we've put in place currently with this pandemic, that we allow them the flexibility to use this one-time money as is needed, which I'm sure they will, and which I know that they will apprise the council on a regular basis. So based on that, I have full confidence in how this money will, should it have to be spent.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, I will poll each councilmember individually for your vote. When I call your name, please indicate a yea or a nay. Deputy Mayor Mahoney?
Yea.
Councilmember Martinelli?
Yea.
Councilmember Bangs?
Yea.
Councilmember Nutting?
Yea.
Councilmember Harris?
Yea.
Councilmember Buxton?
Yea.
And I also vote yea. The motion passes 7-0. We are at the end of our meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled at this time for May 7, 2020. Do I have a motion? Excuse me?
Councilmember Buxton.
Councilmember Buxton, you're a little fuzzy, but yes?
Is there an opportunity for, I don't know, a comment or a good of the order, something like that, before we close?
No, there isn't, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, I don't know where to add this, but still, I would like to say that I am uncomfortable with how our councilmember reports ended up. And I think I just want to go on record in saying that it made me very uncomfortable how that all ended. And that's all I want to say about it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No move.
Motion made by Councilmember Bangs, seconded by myself.
Seconded.
Was that... Was that Deputy Mayor...
It was, correct. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Mahoney.
Okay. All those in... I'll call the vote. Deputy Mayor, your vote, yea, nay?
Yea.
Councilmember Martinelli?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bangs?
Yea.
Councilmember Nutting?
Yea.
Councilmember Harris?
Yea.
Councilmember Buxton?
Yea.
And I so say yea. That's 7-0 passage. We are adjourned. See y'all soon.